The council meeting will now come to order, please stand for pledge allegiance.
First, I want to just send my condolences to Gregory's Myrick's family and the loss of his mom, as well as my family, one of my cousins was murdered last week in Gary, so keep us in your prayers. Heavenly Father, we just come before you saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you guide us and direct us, Lord, so that we can do the job that said before. As we ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Clerk Golick roll call.
Markovich. Spitali. Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Yes, here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Enosa. Opinker.
Here.
Number three, reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I think a motion to accept the minutes from October twenty-second, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski to accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Number four, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that, beginning with claims dated ten twenty-four twelve and ending with claims dated eleven fourteen twelve, claim number four eight eight one through claim number five two six seven inclusive be approved.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali to approve the claims. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion on the approval of claims? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa. Opinker.
Yes. Claims passed, seven zero two absent.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to move to suspend the rules to welcome our veteran guests here tonight to the council. They have a presentation of signs, the Purple Heart Trail, signs that they are giving to the city. And we voted unanimously on the resolution, so I so move.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Kalwinski to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended. Gentlemen, approach the podium.
Thank you, members of the council. As Councilman Emerson said, last time I was here was September twenty-fourth. I asked you to support the passage of a resolution that would name that portion of US forty-one within the city limits of Hammond as part of the nationwide Purple Heart Trail. I said there's, there was no cost to the city of Hammond with one caveat, and that was, we would not put up the signs. We would furnish you the signs and have your, one of your departments put them up. I was talking with Councilman Emerson about the physical presenting of the signs, and he suggested I not frisbee them to you. So, I'd like to, I'd like to introduce Jeffrey Stoll, who's a Hammond member, a Hammond resident. And Jeff was in Vietnam sixty-nine seventy?
Six-eight sixty-nine.
Six-eight sixty-nine.
Forty-five fifty.
How do you want to physically get these handed over?
Mr. President, I can take the signs.
Yeah, that's fine, Councilman Emerson. You folks might want to show the signs to the cameras so you, so they could see them on Go Hammond website. And then we'll see that they get the, uh, Street Commissioner Gary Gleason, and they will be put up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now I need an order to go back to motion.
To be back to regular order of business.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Higgs to go back to regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to regular order of business. Number six, communications.
Item A, ordinance twelve dash fifty-seven sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of plan proceeds for program year two thousand thirteen.
Public hearing for ordinance twelve fifty-seven is now open. Anybody who would like to speak on twelve fifty-seven, please approach the podium.
Alvin Cheeks, eight hundred block of Merrill. I would hope that this council makes sure that the basketball court gets replaced in Harrison Park, um, and that the golf hall be pla, golf hole be placed there. Um, Harrison Park always had a, um, basketball court over the years. Some things happened, they removed them. So, the people that live in that area, the little kids, they have to travel across Cayman Avenue to be able to play basketball, and it creates a safety hazard. You know, I've heard some of the stories that they say the things that go on in the park, but I'm out there in the park with my son all the time. You don't see some of the same things that used to occur, occurring at Harrison Park. Um, Eggers took away their basketball hoops, so now the kids that live in that area, they cannot play basketball in that area. They have to travel more than a mile away to be able to play basketball. So, I would hope that the council would make sure that the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, Department of Planning and Development replaces those basketball hoops that were long, took away in their budget. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on ordinance twelve fifty-seven? Public hearing is now closed. Number six, communications. Are there any communications? Any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Um, I received an email, and it's, uh, from, uh, Mary Beth Nicoloo, Director of Talent Development. Great news. Lincoln Elementary School placed first in the Lego Regional Competition. In addition, Edison Elementary, Morton Elementary, and Jefferson Elementary also qualified for the state championship on November ninth in Fort Wayne, Indiana. These teams have invested countless hours of preparation in their teams. Congratulations to all, and good luck in Fort Wayne. Mary Beth Nicoloo, Director of Talent Development and Special Programs, School City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received the correspondence from the City of Detroit, Office of the City Clerk, Janice M. Winfield. Dear colleagues, as a mayor, as a leader in your community, you have been recognized as competent, innovative, and successful. I commend you on your achievements, however, your attributes be, became even more valuable when you participated in a broader and more diverse group of leaders. In fact, success increasingly hinges on one ability to function and flourish in groups. To the end, I invite you to join the National League of Cities and advance and resource for more than nineteen hun, nineteen thousand cities, villages, and towns. When you joined the NLC, you became a member of a network of municipalities that care about their future. The NLC network includes mayors, city council members, clerks, department heads, city staff, and municipalities of all sizes. Membership offers resources and services that will enhance the quality of life for the residents. Additionally, your participation increased your value as well as the ability to understand to work with people. As an ambassador of the National League of City, I personally extend this invitation of membership to you. Together, we can help lead the future communities. For additional information, you may contact me directly by calling NLC Member Services at two oh two six two six thirty-one hundred, or email me at memberservice@nlc.org. I hope to see you at the next conference. Best regards, Janice M. Winfield.
Any other communications?
Next, uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Have a correspondence from, uh, one of my constituents, Deborah A. Holin, at two fifty-two Williams. She just said, "I am desperately in need of the help. I have enclosed three sets of pictures, and this is what I've had to look through my backyard and went." The first page of the pictures is a fenced gating, gates leaning up against a tree and boarded wire. This is the property next to me at two fifty-four Williams. I called code enforcement, and somehow my complaints was lost. Enclosed a copy of my phone log showing all my calls to them. The second page shows what I constructed so I can, so I do not have to view the boarded, be, boarded up fence. Code enforcement received a call from the person who lives next to me at two fifty-four Williams, and I was cited for litter and unsightly fence, copies of the citation enclosed. The person who lives next to me was cited for nothing. I went to court thinking that someone would listen to me and at least ask the person to move the fenced gate into her garage until she could have them installed. Mind you, they are taller than six feet limit. However, the court could not, would not do anything, and Judge Foster stated, "Two wrongs don't make a right." Before I left the court, I tried to talk to, to this big African-American woman, and she said, "There is no violations on the property at two fifty-four." And she had been there many times. I beg to differ. I have emailed the mayor, I got no response. I don't think I should have to look at this mess. She has bricks stacked up in her yard, which were from the street and that was done years ago. There, she also, she has scrap siding laying in her yard, and she had a siding put on a few years. I have enclosed a picture of the yard from the alleyway. The person at two fifty-four Williams has a garage that she could easily move the items there until she needs to use them. However, the person says her garage is still full of her grandfather's tools. Well, maybe it's time she cleans it up. Her grandfather has been dead since nineteen ninety, and it's time for her to move on. The third page is what I got to see, and I, after taking my barriers down, and this is what I am looking at day to day, out through my back window, and when I am in the, my backyard, would like to look at this in my backyard. When, when the first, when you first started campaigning, you, you stated you wanted to beautify our area and, and had the alleys asphalt. I know the housing is not great right now, but all this woman has to do is move the fence, and she has two grown sons, almost eighteen to twenty, and her sons live with her. There's no reason for this fence to be there. Just thought I would read that, so nobody says I didn't read the correspondence. Kind of lengthy, but, um, I'll board it to code enforcement and see what they have to say. That's all I can do.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number eight, ordinance is third and final reading. There are none. Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twelve dash fifty-eight sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that twelve dash fifty-eight go through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole with the public hearing set for December ten, two thousand twelve.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman, uh, Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion on twelve fifty-eight? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item B, ordinance twelve dash fifty-nine sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance to adopt an additional appropriation in excess of the budget for the current year.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that twelve dash fifty-nine pass through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole with the public hearing set for December ten. I'm sorry, I have to change that public hearing, uh, to December seventeen, two thousand twelve.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Higgs to change that date to the seventeenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's gonna, it just hasn't come up yet.
Item C, ordinance twelve dash sixty sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to create a new section of chapter ninety-four to regulate the placement of donation boxes in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of twelve dash six oh and refer to council as a whole.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Kalwinski. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item D, ordinance twelve dash sixty-one sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance concerning appointments to city boards and commissions.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move ordinance twelve sixty-one on first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, ordinance twelve dash sixty-two sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance concerning procedure for adoption of budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move ordinance twelve sixty-two by first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole. I so move.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Number ten, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution twelve R dash twenty-two sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for final passage of twelve R dash twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
This is a reappointment for Ms. Soto Presley for the Redevelopment Commission. This will be her, I believe, third term serving, and we're grateful that she's volunteering again. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I would just like to say that, um, I do attend the redevelopment meetings on a fairly regular basis, and I've always been impressed with Marian's preparation and her knowledge of the project that is coming up before the commission on that, that particular evening. Uh, she is definitely an asset. Uh, she's there always when I'm, when I attend. Uh, she is there on time, and she definitely makes a positive contribution. So, I am more than happy to vote for her.
Any other discussions? Clerk Golick roll call vote on twelve R twenty-two.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa. Opinker.
Yes. Resolutions passes seven zero two absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Number eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I like a letter sent to Engineering as well as NIPSCO. Pole number in the seven hundred block of Eaton, eight one eight ninety-one is out. Seven hundred block of Eaton, sixty-three over two eighty-two is out. Um, Cloud Avenue, Cloud Street in the alley, fifty-six hundred block, pole number three eighteen over twenty-one is out. Erie Street, fifty-seven twenty-eight, pole number eight eight oh three eight is out. Uh, it's between Erie and, uh, Cayman Avenue. Nine hundred block of Eaton, sixty over seven one eight is out. Howard Avenue, six thousand block, five ninety-one over four seventy-six is out. Six thousand block of Tapper, seventy-two over three oh two is out. Nine hundred block of May in the alley, sixty eight, sixty-eight over eight twenty-four is out. In the alley of eleven hundred block of Lyons in Eaton, eighty-eight over one thirty-two is out. Eleven hundred block of Cleveland, uh, forty-three over oh three six is also out. Um... Columbia Avenue. No, that's Ornamental Light on Revan Burns Drive and Field Street. That's out. Um... In the alley of the ten hundred block of Conkey in Ames, thirty-five over one six, seven sixty-nine is out as well.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I, uh, was invited to go to a, uh...
Mr. President, I needed a second to that motion.
Okay. Okay, this is a motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent, second by Councilman Salinas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Emerson.
Thank you. Um, I was invited to, uh, attend a, it's called the first, what's called by, it was sponsored by Rebuilding Together, an organization that finds, uh, homes and people in need of having their homes improved in some way. Uh, they called it their first rebuilding project in Hammond. And the reason I bring it up, it was November fifth, and it was up on Baltimore, uh, North Hammond there. Uh, and, uh, I attended, and there was, oh, there must have been at least twenty or more people volunteering to rehab this lady's home. And I heard this loud noise, and it was familiar in that it was a leaf blower. And in my neighborhood, everyone seems to have leaf blowers, but, uh, the person running the leaf blower was Councilman Kalwinski, who stepped out for a moment, but, uh, I just wanted to kind of give kudos to him. Uh, he, he mentioned the term at our last meeting of walking talk. And, uh, well, I stopped in to see what was going on, there he was, leaf blowing, uh, not just the home area of, uh, the lady, uh, but the entire, uh, block, it seemed at one point. So, he was, you know, he was pitching in, and maybe he can talk more about it, but, uh, she was a widow and, uh, was desperately in need of help, and, uh, it was, it was a nice, nice thing, especially with the holidays coming up, so I want to make sure he got mentioned too.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have the council meeting scheduled for twenty, for twelve-ten and twelve-twenty-four be canceled, and that a council meeting be set for twelve-seventeen twelve at six P.M. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, um, second by Councilman Higgs to cancel the two scheduled meetings for next month and have one meeting on, uh, twelve-seventeen. Um, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting set for twelve-seventeen for next month.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to, um, the Street Department at fifty-eight forty. There's a large pothole behind the Boys and Girls Club, so that needs to be repaired. And also, I'd like a letter sent to, um, the Street Department in regards to some bags of, uh, litter that's directly behind, um, the old Kentucky Fried Chicken building at the fifty-hundred, fifty-eight hundred block of Cayman Avenue. I so move.
Thank you.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to the Street Department, second by Councilman Salinas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Received a couple of calls regarding the collection of, in this case, leaves, although I, you know, the ordinance, I looked up ninety-four point oh four four talks about grass clippings, et cetera. Um, what the complaints were about were people are blowing or raking their leaves to the curb. And leaving them, right, correct, Councilman. And, you know, before the meeting, Attorney Cantor and I talked, and, and this is, this is more just a reminder that the city does not pick these leaves up with, we don't have the trucks anymore. In the past, we did. Now, maybe they have a lawn service that picks them up, I don't know, but they leave them out there, and a couple of things happen. They go into the sewers, and that, they tell me is not good for the ecosystem, or they blow back on your lawn, so you got them right back. So, you know, mulch them or bag them, but just leaving them on the curb is not going to work. You're going to be waiting all winter for someone to pick them up. So, I just wanted to, as a reminder, you know, that that's what they're doing. If they moved from somewhere, maybe out of state, out of Hammond, maybe they did that in their community, but we don't do it anymore.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like a letter sent to all city departments, commissions, and boards requesting that they email, uh, any correspondence that they have, whether it be meeting agendas, meeting minutes, uh, any correspondence, that they email their correspondence to the council office. Uh, and what will happen there is Debbie will then in turn email us all of the communication. Uh, what happens is, uh, each of us nine council people get packages, uh, for instance, from the sanitation district, uh, in, in excess of a hundred pages. That's a hundred pages per councilperson of paper, toner, time copying, and I think it would just be more efficient for us to receive our communication via email. So, that is my request.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali, send a letter to all the departments in regards to, um, emailing letters and notices. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to recognize our redevelopment president, Jimmy Lambert, is in the audience. Thank you for coming.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, for those who wish to be involved in your community and informed as to what's going on in your neighborhood, I'd like to announce some crime watch meetings. Uh, Tuesday, November twentieth, tomorrow, uh, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch meets at six-thirty P.M. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Wednesday, December fifth, Harrison Park Crime Watch meets at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Uh, also on Wednesday, December fifth, Edison Community Watch meets at Edison School. Uh, that begins at six-thirty. Uh, Thursday, Nov, uh, December twelfth, the Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch meets at six-thirty P.M. at Calumet College. And on Wednesday, December, okay, Whiting Robertsdale meets on the thirteenth. Uh, is that correct, Bonnie?
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday, okay, is the thirteenth. Okay, so my date was wrong on Whiting Robertsdale. That's the thirteenth. Um, Irving Community Watch meets at Irving School on Wednesday, December twelfth, six-thirty P.M. So, those who wish to do good in your community, uh, that's how change happens. One gesture, one person, one moment at a time. I look forward to seeing all of you there.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President, I'd just like to wish, uh, all of the individuals that are in the audience, as well as the people that are watching and my colleagues, a happy Thanksgiving. audience, as well as the people that are watching, and my colleagues, a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Oh, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vinesz.
I'd like to remind everybody, the Hammond Holiday Parade is Saturday, December 1st. Uh, it kicks off at Gavitt High School at 10 AM, uh, goes down Indianapolis Boulevard, and ends on 169th and Woodmar. It's always a great family event. Uh, tell the kids to bring their bags because everybody throws candy, so, uh, hope to see you there. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. First speaker of the night, Mr. George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. I just wanted to say that, uh, with respect to the, uh, issue, uh, issues like leaves in the street, uh, it's been my experience, especially in my neighborhood, that a lot of the citizens don't know, uh, what's available to them in terms of, terms of city services, and what their, I guess, responsibilities are. Uh, I mean, they just don't know. I mean, I was thinking, uh, the other day, I was thinking, I mean, there's been times where guys leave stuff out for pickup in the alleys and stuff, and I'll let it sit there for three days thinking, well, I don't want to be the nosy neighbor that calls and calls the sanitary, uh, sanitation department and says, "Hey, come out and pick it up." And, uh, invariably, I am the one that calls them up, and they come. I mean, they come. And it's like, if I know if I didn't call, eh, that stuff would still be sitting there. And it's like, oh, come on, you got to know, and I don't think they do. And maybe something like a campaign citizenship ought to be, uh, introduced or something, I don't know. But I believe, you know, because it, it appears as though the citizens are indifferent, and I think, I think it's, they just don't know. And, uh, like when you were announcing about the leaves here, this minor discussion, uh, to the extent they're listening to it on the, uh, computer, uh, it's great, they know, but, you know, anyway, uh, anything else, uh? No. Thanks.
George, thank you for making the call.
Last speaker of the night, Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, 800 Block of Merrill. I just want to tell Linda, thank you. Um, Linda, my son is on the video cam, but it fell off, but he just wanted to say, you know, enjoy your retirement and enjoy life. I first met her from Ed Repay Senior, and thanks, Linda.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Higgs, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.